All the October 20th, uh, 28th, 2013 meeting to order. At this time, if we could get a roll call, please.
Mayor Shirley, Vice Mayor Householder.
Here.
Commissioner Blanchard.
Here.
Commissioner Crawford. Commissioner Hardy.
Here. If those who are able could stand now and will do the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with the great nature of its essence for all.
Thank you. We move on now to awards and proclamations.
Item 3.1, the day of November 1st, 2013, as extra mile day in the city of Salina. Clay Thompson, Advisory Council Chair, will read the proclamation.
Mr. Thompson.
Thank you. Good afternoon, commissioners. Appreciate you giving us time. First, before reading that proclamation, I'd like to tell you about our Fall Fix-Up Day, which was just completed this last Saturday. And it was postponed a week, so that had an impact on the number of people that were able to be there, but those that came did a great job. And I personally would like to thank all of the city employees that were there helping us out with a lot of different things. And each year, it seems like we have more and more of the people from the city that are attending that function and helping us in different ways. And so Gary Hobbie, Wayne Nelson, Bob Ash, Carl Garten, Jason Graves, were all there working and doing a great job. We had six projects this year during our Fall Fix-Up event, and those included going to six residential homes, helping them out with lawn care, helping them clean up their house, and cutting a lot of tree limbs. The second one was the rain garden, which actually is a North Salina project, and it's, they had a grant to do part of it. And John was one of them that was there, as well as Gary. I understand Gary was driving some contraption, which probably, had we had the police present, we probably would have had some problems there, but...
(laughter)
The rain garden, if you haven't seen it, is at Ninth and Broadway, and it is really a beautiful project. I went by there again today to look at it, and it's, it's well done. Then the other thing we did was water barrels. We made 128 water barrels out of the 55-gallon things, and since we started doing that, I think we've made close to 400. Is that right, John?
Oh, close.
And we disposed of all but about, probably 75 of them now. And those are going out and helping the city in terms of collection of water and taking care of water issues. Barb Good has been the primary push on that and has done a great job with it. We also went to South Middle School and Lakewood Middle School and painted their bleachers. And then we did drain marking, and Wayne was in charge of that. Because of the size of the crowd, we were concerned that we probably wouldn't get very many of them done, but it's my understanding, they did, they did somewhere between 250 and 275 rain markers, so that was certainly a great deal. And then if you drive by right south of the swimming pool, the new swimming pool, you'll see the riv- the river cleanup project that was done, and that just looks spectacular. It really looks great. And hopefully, we can continue to do that project along the riverbank, because it makes a big difference in the, just the beauty of the area. Big thank you to Darren Fisher, who's the manager of the Western Sislin. For two years now, they've provided us with free biscuits and gravies, and that's how we start out our project. And as I picked him up 6:30 yesterday, or Saturday morning, he said, "Count on me to do this again for you next year." So that kind of talks about the spirit in Salina in terms of volunteerism and helping people out, and it really is appreciated. Avna Purney and Steve Seabree helped us out with the trailers. The Covenant Church did a lot of different things, and even had some good workers at several different sites. So in a brief just comment, I just want to tell you that we feel like that the spring cleanup and fall fix-up are appropriate opportunities to come back to Salina and contribute to Salina. We plan on doing that at least two times a year, and we really, truly appreciate the support that we get from Salina and the commissioners and the staff. And I'm supposed to read a proclamation, which I will do at this time. Whereas Salina, Kansas is a community which acknowledges that a special vibrancy exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. And whereas Salina, Kansas is a community which encourages its, encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. And whereas Salina, Kansas is a community which chooses to shine a light on this and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. And whereas Salina, Kansas acknowledges the mission of Extra Mile America, to create 400 extra mile cities in America, and is proud to join the support of Extra Mile Day on November 1st, 2013. Now therefore, I, Aaron Householder, Vice President, or Vice Mayor of Salina, do hereby proclaim November 1st, 2013 to be Extra Mile Day in Salina, Kansas, and I urge each individual in the community to take time on this day to not only go the extra mile in his or her own life, but to acknowledge all those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, families, community, country, or world a better place.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
I think it's pretty amazing. I mean, I don't remember, I knew you guys were off a week this year, but last year, what was the count that you guys had, 300 and some, I mean...
Well, we've had as many as 500.
Yeah.
Show up for the event. We did not, we approached 100 this, this year, but that was because of having the week off because of the snow and...
Sure, well, it sounded like you guys got a lot done.
Oh, we got a lot done, yeah.
And the next, the next cleanup is, comes in...
It'll be April, I think, of this next year.
Have they have a date set yet, so we can all start?
I was thinking like April 16th or something like that.
Somewhere in there, fantastic. Well, it's a great, great deal, and I think it shows great on the community. I have a signed copy for it here. I really appreciate it.
Sure.
And thank you for all you do, Clay, and the rest of the volunteers as well.
Sure. At this time, we'll open this up to a citizens' forum. If there's any one of the audience who has anything to discuss that's not on today's agenda, now would be the time to do so.
To the city commissioners and vice mayor, and thank you for giving us this opportunity to speak our mind. I would just like to take this opportunity personally to thank you for having such a wonderful Dick's Sporting Goods store open here in Salina last week. It was amazing. And City Commissioner Randall Hardy, you were there, John Blanchard, you were there, Aaron Householder, you were there, the city manager was there, the city people just giving all they have. And again, within today, which is Wednesday, October 30th, Marshall will have their opening date at 8 o'clock in the morning. And we need thousands and thousands of people to go in there shopping. There's going to be all kind of free stuff, free things. And I thank you so much for the city of Salina for having all these retail sales and sporting goods, because I'm a hunter at heart. I love hunting and guns. And also, I would like to like, thank Bingston Tire today, because I had a flat tire on the freeway. Mr. Bingston Tire at the 730 North Santa Fe, Salina, Kansas, 67401. The tire sales is Jesse and Justin Bingston. The phone number is 785-823-3771. Once again, from the bottom of my heart, I thank you for having all these wonderful opening stores, and most importantly is that, thank you for making, you are the very important part of Salina. You made this happen, and that's something that I, I respectfully and love about the city of Salina. And you moved forward, and you, you just go out there, did your shopping, and I saw a, Randy, City Commissioner Randall Hardy came out, and I even offered him to open a count with the, with the Dick's Sporting Goods, so you get the discount. And most, the last most important of all, thank you for the servicemen and men around the world, especially in the camp, in Kingdom of Cambodia. Somakun, thank you.
Thank you.
Shishii.
May have to put you to work for the Chamber of Commerce, Tracy. (laughter) We'll move on to the consent, oh, there's no other public comment. What else? Okay. We'll move on to the consent agenda. If there's anything a commissioner would like to remove or amend from the consent agenda, if not, I would entertain a motion on that.
I'd move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion in second, approve the consent agenda as presented, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries 3-0. That will move us on to administration.
Item 7.1, second reading ordinance number 13-10721, amending the future land use map of the comprehensive plan.
The second reading ordinance, 13-10721, was passed on October 21st, 2013. Since that time, no comments have been received. Is there anything from any of the commission on this? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Vice Mayor, do we need to open this to public?
Oh, I'm sorry, we do need to open this to public. Is there any public discussion on this before we put this to a vote? Anyone? Okay, I'll bring it back then to the commission for possible action on this.
Uh, then, Mr. Vice Mayor, I move that we adopt on second reading ordinance number 13-10721.
Second.
Motion in second to adopt on second reading ordinance 13-10721. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Blanchard.
Aye.
Commissioner Hardy.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Householder.
Aye. That motion carries 3-0 as well.
Item 7.2, resolution number 13-7051, amending the solid waste management plan.
Mr. Frazier on this, I believe, is it correct? Yes, Vice Mayor and Commissioners. The city of Salina has offered landfill disposal discounts for about eight years. They have been based on the amount of waste and length of time of out-of-county, high-volume disposal customers would commit to bringing that waste to the city landfill. The more waste disposed of and the longer time period would result in a higher tipping fee discount. The intention of this discount was to be able to attract new business to the landfill. However, over the last eight years, we've not been able to, to do that. Currently, we have four interlocal disposal agreements with the counties of Ottawa, Lincoln, Ellsworth, which really is Selecta Enterprises that collects for them, and McPherson County, which really is the McPherson area solid waste utility. Each receive a discount. McPherson has the highest one of a dollar per ton. The others have 50 cents per ton based on three, or $30.50 per ton tipping fee. On October 22nd, the Salina-Saline County Solid Waste Management Committee met to discuss these possible changes, and the staff proposed a change of eliminating the requirement for landfill interlocal disposal agreements and the discounts. Without the discounts and with the approved landfill master plan, which really extends the life of the landfill to 160 years, staff believes that the agreements are no longer relevant as they once were. The solid waste committee is recommending this change and reaffirming the remaining portion of the solid waste plan. And we look at that every year and, and see if there's changes to be made to that. The elimination of the discounts will save the city about $25,000 a year, plus staff's time and effort in processing these legal documents. Staff has identified the following options and recommends option one, which is to adopt resolution 13-7051, approving the revisions of the solid waste management plan as presented. Be happy to answer any of your questions.
Any questions for staff?
Uh, Mr. Frazier, on the, on letting these interlocal agreements go and the discounts, I know McPherson was doing their own, they were potentially going to go and not use us anyway. Is that...
That's correct. They're going to be opening up their own disposal facility after the first of the year.
So the only other impacts would be to the other three entities on that. Do they still plan to...
They still plan to bring their, their solid waste to our facility.
Okay, and so it still makes sense for them to do that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Any other questions for staff?
Uh, how does our tipping fee compare with other landfills?
It's very competitive. We're not the highest, we're not the lowest, but we are towards the, to the bottom, so we offer a very competitive fee.
So we're, that's mainly why we're good without offering a discount, then?
Well, the purpose for the discount was really to try to be able to be the lowest or towards the lowest, to be able to attract more business here. One of the problems that we encountered with that was, is that we may be able to control the, the disposal fee, but not the transportation fee to get the trash here. And that's where we really weren't very competitive. We just don't offer that, that option.
Does it simplify for those other communities that, that they don't have to go into an interlocal agreement, that they can just simply, do they just simply use the facility like any other commercial?
We, we sent a letter out and contacted them, and only one of the, one of the other three had a concern about interlocal dispos- not having an interlocal disposal agreement. Their concern was, is that we would restrict them from bringing their trash here, and then they wouldn't be able to find a place very quickly to be able to take it. And, and working with the city manager to be able to correspond to them, that that's really not our intention, and, and that that's really not an issue.
Just to add that, Commissioners, I think Mike could probably speak to this, but prior to the use of the interlocal agreements, we, you know, the way we, the landfill was run, we probably estimated anywhere between about 75 and 90 years' life, which is still very long for a landfill, but there was a lot of effort to make sure we managed the volume so much that, that we continued to have a long life. And that's a good thing, and we want to balance that, but as we looked further at the utilization, we figured out that really being between about 100 and, I don't know, 10 and 120,000 tons roughly...
About 120.
120.
Was the maximum.
Was the best utilization of volume for the staff, the cost, the operation, the whole thing. And really didn't put much hamper on that life, but again, now that we're able to elevate those cells and, and rise them up a little bit higher, our life is probably in that 160 range. So we just really felt there wasn't much of a need for these anymore, and want to make sure they know they can bring their waste. Now, if, if by chance, because we haven't seen a lot of demand, but if by chance somehow we get a huge spike in demand, and we say, "Hold on, we want to slow down the rate, we may be coming back," but at this point, we haven't seen that out there, so we're not too worried about it.
Right. That's a good point, is that we, basically with the approval of the master plan, we have doubled the life of that facility from 82 years to 160 approximately. And that, one of the things that we've explained to, to our customers is that we're looking for additional customers, because those additional tons help us to be able to keep the fees low for everybody. So I think it's one of those things, we're working through those, those issues with them right now.
Okay. Any other questions? Any questions or comments from the public? Seeing none, I would bring it back to the commission for possible action.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I would move that we approve on second the resolution number 13-7051, amending the solid waste management plan.
I'll second.
We have a motion in second to adopt resolution number 13-7051, amending the solid waste management plan. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries 3-0, moves us on to development business.
Item 8.1, consider recommendation from the building advisory board on a request to require a roofing permit and inspection.
Mr. DeVores.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor Householder.
Football season starting soon, or...
I'm sorry?
Is football season starting soon? Has it started now? I'm not a sports fan. Have you been out bronk-ing it?
12:30 this morning.
Oh, you did? Oh, so you's bright-eyed and ready, ready for us?
Bright-eyed, wish you'd have. Yes, sir.
There he is.
Yes, sir. It has, it is in full swing, and we actually have some competition this year.
Really?
In the form of the Kansas City Chiefs.
Well, that'll make for some...
But I know we're not here to talk about that.
Yeah. I see, my, we, the reason I ask you about that, because I had a real fear that we were going to actually finish this meeting early, so I wanted to kind of add a few things, because it's just...
Well, I can go on and on. I mean, you give me talking about football and...
We feel uncomfortable getting out of here before 8 o'clock, so...
Yeah, you give me talking about football, and, and we could be here till midnight. Vice Mayor, Householder, and Commissioners, today, I'm bringing to you the results of a request for a text amendment that came from a roofing contractor here in town. This basically, it, this request started back in 2012, 2012, but it actually goes back further than that. It goes back to the 97 code, when that was adopted in 2002 here by the city of Salina. At that time, there was an amendment made to the code, to section 105.2 of the International Building Code, and that is the section that is the work exempt from permit section. And, and there were a couple of things that were added into there, and one of those being an item all by itself, roof cover, and, and once again, these are items that are exempted from permits. And that would be roof coverings not involving structural components. So in other words, we're talking about re-roofs. If you don't, we consider structural component if you remove the decking. That's, you're getting into the structural elements of the building, the, the truss system. So that was adopted into the 97 code in 2002, and it has carried over into the international codes that amend those, those, all of those amendments and that one also. And that is the one that we're here to talk about today. We had, on February 14th of 2012, of the month previous to that, I had contact from Ray Roofing, and, and they were concerned about improper installation of re-roofing materials. And I told them that they, told them the procedure. They then came to the building advisory board on February 14th, and in the public speaking portion of the meeting, they just kind of presented their case. And of course, that was just an FYI, if nothing else. And then they did follow up the following year. On June 11th of 2013, they did submit a text amendment, and the building advisory board heard that request. And that request was basically to require any re-roofing of a commercial structure only, we're talking only of commercial structures here, 25% greater than, 25% or greater would require permits. Once again, it's, it, this, we do not do roofing permits, re-roofing permits now because of that amendment that was put in there. At that time, the, one of the, one of the options for the building advisory board was to form a committee, which we did. We met, we met with the contractor, Ray Roofing, and, and there were a couple of other contractors there, and, and I had put out a, we have a, a group chat on the web that, for all of the building officials in the state, the HOA, Heartland of America, and I had put out a, a question, just a simple question, how many require permits? How many licensed contractors? I need to back up just a second. We do require contractors to be registered, and they, we do require a qualified individual, but we do not require continuing education. So that was part of the email, too. How many contractors do you require to be licensed? How many of you require permits? I was kind of surprised to only receive five responses from five different jurisdictions. So this is kind of a touchy subject in the state of Kansas due to the, due to the hailstorms that we have, and that's, that is the main concern, is that you have a major hailstorm, and all of a sudden, you're inundated with permits and applications and people. And the, the state has recently addressed that by now requiring all, all contractors, whether it's residential or commercial, to be registered with the state of Kansas. And that has come about here just this last July that took effect. So the state is, recognizes that it is a, that it is an issue. So we, we met, the subcommittee met, we, they also, the, the roofing company showed us a PowerPoint the day that they presented it to the BAB before we went and had a special committee. I'm backing up again. They had a, a building, a commercial building here in the city of Salina, and they were removing the, the roofing material, and it was quite wet, and the steel decking had rusted, and so their contention is, is that contractors come in and they put more than, more than the two layers, the, I've got the code language that, the code basically says that if you remove, let me read it exactly. There's, all, all existing layers of roof coverings need to be removed where, where any of the following conditions occur: where the existing roof or roof covering is water-soaked or has deteriorated to the point the existing roof or roof covering is not adequate as a base for additional roofing; where the existing roof covering is wood shake, slate, clay, cement, or asbestos cement tile; and where the existing roof has two or more applications of any type of roof covering. And that's where they contend that that is not being done, because we do not issue permits, we don't go, go and do inspections. The, backing up to the work exempt for permit, it, just because you doesn't require a permit, you still have to do the work per code. I mean, that's, basically, it's just saying you don't have to acquire a permit. So the committee met, and we, we met with Ray Roofing, and they, they presented their case to us, and, and we also had another couple of contractors that attended. And we, we did not make a determination at that time, but then on August of this year, we, after we had met with the subcommittee, we got together after the BAB meeting, and the, the committee made up, which was made up of three of the BAB members, decided that they would not recommend this being approved. The reason being is that, number one, they've, they were concerned that it was business-driven and that it was, it was trying to encourage owners to use a certain type of roof, roof covering, the old mop and asphalt. I'm sure you, you remember when you used, the town used to always have those mop and the, the device going up, putting the asphalt, or the, the tar up on the roof, on the old tar buckets. And that's kind of a way of the past. They, they come in now, and they have these composite roof systems that go on pretty quick and slick, and, and so the BAB was concerned that that, that that was a move to try to move towards that, that type, a specific type of, of roof covering. The other consideration is that the, right now, as far as building services is concerned, that would be an, an added, an added workload to us. Right now, we are trying to practice the lean principles, and we're, this, this could, we, we have no way of tracking how many permits this would generate, because we don't issue the permits. And, you know, if you drive around the city and you see some commercial, you know, like, I, I hate to even guess, but I, I don't believe there's more than two or three, or, and this is just a, a total guess, two or three going on at any one time. But if we did have a major hail event, we could have, we could be inundated with several commercial permits, so. So basically, the, that would involve not only the potential of, of more staff being required, but also we would have to retrofit, retrofit our trucks to be able to have ladders so that we could get up on the roofs, and, and because a lot of times when they call for the final inspection, they're gone, and, and, you know, that would be something that we would have to, we do have right now three Ford Ranger trucks that we could get a rack, put it on the back, and, and put a ladder, but that would be an added expense that, but basically, it's just that, that, that potential for, for an added workload. So today, the, the building advisory board, like I say, they, they did not move to approve this amendment, and it is all the information there in your packet. So we have options today for the, the commission's consideration. Number one would be recommend approval of the proposed code amendment to the 2006 International Building Code as presented in its entirety, and once again, that would only be commercial, and it would only be 25% or more. Modify the proposed language and make a recommendation of that revised code amendment language, allowing for no further review by the, by the board or the commission. And, or postpone action on the request to text amendment. Appoint, appoint a code review committee to meet, review and discuss further alternative options for code language, and return their findings and recommendations to the board at a future meeting. And number four, deny the request for an amendment resulting in... And, and number four, deny the request for an amendment resulting in no change to the code. Uh, staff in the building advisory roofing subcommittee recommend option number four, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that I can.
I think we might have a difference.
Yeah, I think we got a different.
Yes, clarification, I, I think you may have read the recommendations to the building advisory board from the staff report, rather than the recommendations to the city commission, which may account for the difference in.
Yeah.
The documents.
Hmm. Well, I have the recommendation, staff and building advisory roofing recommend option number four. Would you happen to have the proper one?
Yeah, the, the recommendations that are in the packet are, number one, reject the building advisory board's recommendation to deny the code text amendment, and direct staff to draft an ordinance for a code text amendment based on the proposed languages submitted by Ray Roofing, resulting in the requirement of a re-roofing permit and inspection under certain conditions. Option two, reject the building advisory board's recommendation to deny the code text amendment and direct staff to draft an ordinance for a code text amendment based on proposed languages submitted by Ray Roofing, but with modifications as specified by the city commission. Number three, approve the building advisory board's recommendation to deny the request for a re-roofing code text amendment resulting in no change to the code. And number four, return this item to the building advisory board for further study and recommendation, and staff recommends option number three, which would be approving the building advisory board's recommendation to deny the request for a re-roofing code text amendment resulting in no change to the code.
Hmm.
Which I'm confident the, the staff recommendation's consistent with what came out of the building advisory board.
That sounds, I got this, I believe, today off of the, off of the website, so it must not have been updated. That is my, my mistake, sorry about that.
Sorry.
It, it, it did go through a couple of real quick revisions towards the end there, and, and that's probably, I was trying to find it in my deleted email boxes and couldn't find the official one, and.
Well, as long as this is official enough, yeah, we're good.
That's official.
Any questions for staff?
Yeah, just, uh, just to address the, uh, the concerns that were laid out that kind of started the process, where that roofs were being overloaded and so on. And then to kind of jump forward to the findings of the building advisory board, uh, the, the, just the two findings, one being that it was market-driven, uh, and, or product-driven, and then the, the addition to staff that we don't really have. Was there any discussion leading toward, um, maybe other, was it determined that maybe the change in the, having a permit wasn't going to solve the problem of the overweighted roofs, that, that people weren't following the code, and that it wasn't a permit, or how did that kind of?
There was, there was talk about that, and requiring core samples, and that's where the definitions, I know you, you may have seen the definitions in there of what constitutes layers, um, and, and that would be a whole process in itself to, to determine, because when you get a couple of layers on there, um, it, it's kind of hard for me to determine what is one layer and what is two layers, and, because they pretty much become all together. Um, and that's why the, the, the definitions were going to be added into that, um, because basically, that's what you would have to do. You'd have to have the owner or the contractor core the roof before they, before they apply for a permit, or I guess, I guess to say, if they were not going to remove, and they wanted to prove to the building services that, that it was indeed one layer, and that's why the, the definitions were put in there. Um, and, uh, the, another thing that came to mind as you were asking that question was that, um, the, the contractor only presented one, one, uh, this one building that had an issue, a problem. Um, and so I think that the, the committee was not convinced that, uh, it was as rampant a problem as, as they indicated it was. It, it may or may not be. I, I get phone calls quite often from building owners, contractors, about this issue of, "Well, I have two layers on, can I put another one on?" "No, you, you cannot," and that's the answer, and then they, then, then they say, "Okay, well, what do I do about permits?" "Well, it doesn't require a permit, so are you going to come inspect it?" "No, we don't require a permit." So, um, I, I can't tell you without going out and doing a, uh, you know, investigation on all of the roofs in town, whether or not it's as rampant. They, they indicated that they have run across it all the time, but they really only came in with one particular building, um, as an example. Um, so I, I don't know if they'd have come in with half a dozen. Um, it, it may have been.
And with, and with these being, we're talking commercial only.
Correct.
So the remedy would be more toward the, the building owner?
Correct.
To make sure that when he's contracting for that work, that he asks those questions and that, or she, and they make sure that, uh.
It'd be, it'd be more on the contractor. It, it'd be more that the contractor, who, once again, we require them to be licensed, the state requires them to be registered, and they are, uh, and, and I think, I think another reason that was really put into effect was more so that when we do have a hail event, you get everybody and their brother coming through, "I'm a roofing contractor," and I, you know, so I think that was, that was more of the reason why they really, they really did that. So it's, um, uh, and you have to, you have to provide some credentials and say, you know, it's some experience, and, and so it's not just, "Hey, they had a hail, the big hail storm went through, you know, uh, Goodland, let's go out there and, you know, make some money, and, and we'll be gone before they know what hit them." And, and that, that is, that happens all over the country with.
Right. And in, in those events, you'd probably even have an insurance adjuster that might be aware of some of those as well. So it's not, it doesn't necessarily need to be solved by a permit and an extra few steps, and perhaps even added cost to the consumer by incorporating these steps.
It, it would, it would verify whether or not you had the layers on there.
Okay.
And that's, that is, that is what they're contending, is that if permits were required, then we would verify before we issued the permit if they were going to re-roof, if they were not going to remove any roof covering.
So how do you know if the contractor is registered or licensed?
Well, we have the licensing here, uh, the city clerk's office, we, for us, and then there is a, a website that you can go to, to, for the state, to see whether or not they've been registered.
But if these contractors roll into town, um, to do work with the, the building owner?
I believe it predates, uh, Mr. DeVores' time with the city, but the last hail event we had, we issued kind of an advisory on how to proceed if you've had hail damage, and not necessarily recommending roofing contractors, but recommending good practices, and, and reviewing and hiring them, and one of those was to check that they're a licensed contractor. Um, so we probably tried to provide some advisories when it, when it's key timing.
To building owners?
Yes.
And my, my inspectors also have been instructed that, and as a matter of fact, uh, Ron Michelson and I were out one day, and we were driving down the street, and we saw a roofing contractor that we didn't, we weren't sure, so we went up around the corner and called the office, and sure enough, they were not licensed, so we went back and, and got them, got them lined out. So the, my inspectors, uh, and once again, we're not going up on the roof to see whether or not they, they, they're doing it properly, we're just making sure that they're licensed.
If we see them.
If we see them, yes. And we just happened to be going down a residential street one day, and, and lo and behold, there they were.
And it just worries me a little bit, that it doesn't sound like there's a, a very good check and balance on the people that come into town to do work. I would think it's a bigger problem, probably with residential during, after a hailstorm or something, than it would be the normal, run-of-the-mill, commercial stuff. But, um, it would, it would worry me a little bit that we don't have a, an ironclad way to identify the contractors somehow, when they come into town to do work.
Well, it sounds like we have a list. I mean, at least we know that we're registered, but you're right, I, I think that's difficult, yeah.
That, that's a, that's a, that's a difficulty with building departments. It's, it's an inherent, uh, flaw, in that, you know, if, if we had an extra guy, we could park him down at Lowe's, and one over at Menards, and, and check permits, and, I mean, there are people that do tons of work in the city that are not licensed, and, um, and it just so happens that when a hail event happens, that's, it, it draws them all from, you know, all over. I, you know, that, that's one of the things I deal with on an ongoing basis, is, is, you know, people call and say, "Well, can I do work for this guy or that guy?" And, and we have another amendment that's, will be coming towards your way here at, at some point concerning volunteers doing work. Um, so we're working on that one, getting the language together for that one, and, um, so.
Any other questions for staff?
Thank you.
Any public comment?
I'm Judy Larson, seven-fifteen North Ninth, and I was confused about something that I'm hoping you can clarify. You made the remark that, um, whether they're registered or not, they still have to do the code, the work according to code. That makes me nervous, because if at some point you would find out that the work hadn't been done according to code, there would be no reason, they could just say, "Hey, we weren't required to, there was no documentation, there was nothing that said we had to do code." And it seems to me the language should be there, no matter what it takes as far as staff and everything, just to protect ourselves from stuff down the road, you know, 'cause they can raise their hand and say, "Sir, you didn't tell us that I needed to be registered, or I needed to do this according to code." And I think leaving that little gap could cause trouble down the road. Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, the code does, does state that, um, work exempt from a permit, and contractors, um, are required to be tested, um, under the building code, and they are responsible to, to know the requirements of the building code. Um, and it does say work exempt from a permit, exemptions from permit, and this is section one-oh-five-point-two of the International Building Code, and also our amendment, um, and it does say exemptions from permit requirements of this code shall not be deemed to grant authorization for any work to be done in any manner in violation of the provisions of this code, or any other laws or ordinances of this jurisdiction. Permit, and then it goes on to say permits shall not be required. So it, it, just because you don't get a permit does not mean that you can, if you're not required to get a permit, does not give you license to do the work however you want to, and not to follow the codes.
And I think maybe if our, if our concerns are that people might still do this, what we are, what would our process be if we were to find that a contractor had not followed proper building permits? They would still be completely, I assume, liable, and, and.
Most of, what, we, we would, we would take them, uh, we would, uh, we'd, generally, we would warn them, first, first time, we would give them a warning, and then after that, they'd be subject to contractor discipline.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and they could lose their, they could have their license suspended, uh, or could be revoked, uh, to where they could not work in the city.
So it seems to me it's, it's rather than making it a pure bureaucracy, as we try and limit how much government interaction, is we put a little good faith out there with our contractors and say, "Uh, we're, we're going to allow you this much leeway, but we expect this," and I think that maybe hopefully answers her question, that there is a disciplinary process, and.
Correct.
And, and.
We have, we, the, our inspectors are not on the job all the time. I mean, we come out very, very sporadically for certain inspections, and, and there is a lot of work that is, uh, taken on, on by the contractors on, on their own, and we, we even have some situations where, uh, certain situations where, uh, self-certification is, is permitted, um, so, uh, but, uh, the, the contractors in the city need to accept some responsibility, and just because they don't get a permit does not mean that they don't, do not have to follow the rules.
Elvin, just a, a quick question. At the time you've been here, have you noticed with regards to commercial roofs, have you run across roof failure, safety-type issues that are a direct result that you believe of just simply having too many layers of roofing material versus other aspects of a roof?
No, huh? No, I have not.
I didn't think so.
No, I have not.
It kind of gets you into the, our primary role's safety. Now, we can take kind of a Better Business Bureau role as well, but it really depends on what role you would like us to take, and, and, so that appears that from a safety perspective, we're probably fine, and the registration helps us to do that. Um, and again, this would really start to take us probably into more of a different role.
Okay. Any other questions? Any other public comment at all, or questions? If not, I would bring it back to the commission for possible action.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I would, um, move that we approve the building advisory board's recommendation to deny the request for a re-roofing code text amendment resulting in no change to the code.
Second. I have a motion to approve the building advisory board's recommendation to deny the request for a re-roofing code text amendment resulting in no change to the code. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries three-zero. Any other business for today? If not, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
It's a move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.